If we could all stand to pledge allegiance.
Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Jennifer, roll.
Mr. Henderson?
Here.
Mr. Votak? Mr. Duco?
Here.
Mr. Hendricks?
Here.
Mr. Rowley?
Here. Do you have a motion for the approval of minutes of April 27, 2016, and May 19, 2016?
Motion.
Second. Any discussion?
Yeah, there was one correction.
For which day?
It was Anthony Ford, we approved him as a volunteer. It said for the 1617 school year should have been 1516 school year. That was all.
Any further questions or concerns? Jennifer, roll.
Mr. Hendricks?
Yes.
Mr. Duco?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Votak?
Yes.
Mr. Rowley?
Yes. We'll move into treasurer's report, or turn this over to Jennifer.
Okay, treasurer's report has the bills accounts payable, financial reports which contain the board reports. Donations we received was 1,069 from Cleon Smith family and friends for the Ed Smith Memorial Scholarship, $20, $29 from Sheila and Patsy Palumbo for preschool supplies, $100 from Mercer Company for softball, $50 from American Legion for softball, $50 from Barra and Jim Lorch for the class of 18, $50 from Randy and Kathy Sellewade for the Perkins Tortora Memorial Scholarship, $50 from Larry and Diane Tallis for the Perkins Tortora Memorial Scholarship. The financial items to approve are the update to the five-year forecast for May 2016, one-year renewal of services for the nutrition group, and an approval of a contract with Shapley as the MCO for workers' comp for fiscal year 2017, and supplemental budgets of football, boys' basketball, and volleyball for 1617 school year. Motion.
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 Second. Discussion?
We had talked about some of the fundraisers, and I noticed that the prom's fund was like we maintained that or controlled that a lot better this year, was like, what, $1,1900 left over compared to like almost $10,000 last year?
We still have a little bit to come and go out of that account. Yeah, I think they're gonna end with about $3,500, which will be good because they'll use that for their senior class expenses.
Yeah, it's a lot better than last year.
Yes.
And I want to thank Troy and Jennifer, they met with the advisor probably once every two months at least, if not more.
They met with her a lot.
Yeah, so to do that, so thank you guys for doing it.
Kathy, you know, did a really, really nice job with the prom.
She did.
Any further discussion?
Minnesota's heels, Mrs. Soto.
Mr. Hendricks?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Votak?
Yes.
Mr. Duco?
Yes.
Mr. Rowley?
Yes. And then we're gonna move into some public participation. Miss Lisa?
No, there was no call to Michael, I did check it.
Anyone like to talk? All right. And then we will go into old business.
No.
No old business, okay, and then I'll turn this over to Mr. Hendricks with his student achievement report.
The annual spring art show was held on Monday, May 16. Middle school and high school bands performed, and there were 50 students honored at the art show. Best of show was Marshall Calvin, Ashley Grusecki, Jess Gannick, Andrea Nag. First place winners for ceramics were Quentin Crepe, Creative Ceramics, Casey Graves, Creative Sculpture, Mackenzie Woody, Drawings, Monica Schuler, Mixed Media, Emma Colen, Paintings, Austin Keats, Soft Sculpture, Kaylee Hefner, Ukrainian Eggs, Mackenzie Wees. President's Award in 4th grade, 18 students achieved a 3.75 to 4.0 GPA and received a gold Presidential Award. 15 4th grade students achieved 3.5 to 3.74 and received the silver. Leitonia Elementary held an I-Will Finish Strong campaign for 3rd and 4th grade students through testing. Students received tickets for accomplished goals. There was a drawing at the end of four students winning bicycles and 40 students winning Walmart DQ gift cards.
That's it?
Thank you. Hey, I just wanted to state, yesterday was the last day for students, so we finished off the school year. Lot of exciting opportunities and memorable activities. Just go through last week real quick with Mr. Hendricks who was talking about. We started out Monday with an outstanding art show, it was excellent as always. The band going strong, and 83 students signed up next year for the band. So the band keeps getting bigger and bigger. And they did a great performance on Monday as well as Mrs. Mitchell's art show. Then we followed up on Thursday with the banquet. Always great, you always leave that with a great feeling. We award the school funds, the scholarship, the various scholarship funds, awarded $47,291 of local scholarship money to Leitonia students. Our Leitonia students also received $218,500 from various university scholarships for their grade point average and their conference, that was great. And then the weekend ended with a fabulous graduation ceremony on Saturday. And now we're focusing on 201617 school year. Mr. Rodinsky organizing assembly this week to discuss several new curriculum offerings. The STEM course for sophomores and the engineering manufacturing course. We're meeting in, we've met with local companies on several occasions, as well as politicians and elected officials. And first I need to say we did receive the grant from the LGIF, Local Government Initiative Fund, and $36,000. I had a grant meeting this morning, yesterday morning. We had a grant meeting down at the ESC. As I said before, this is kind of a good thing, and I don't want to embarrass people at the table, but it started out as an idea with Mr. Duco and myself, and now it's really exploded up into a real good, where Mr. Henderson and Hunt Valve have kind of partnered with us, if I can say that, to take some apprentice, and I don't want to, you know, and we talked about the possibility of taking four people each year out of this program for the next couple of years as apprentices or senior year to be at Hunt Valve. So we're really excited about that. Compco's excited about it, Bliss Retake was there, but I don't think that they committed, but Compco's very excited about it. PennX is excited about it. So it's come a long way, and we're pretty proud of it. Meeting with the state on the 30th. It's interesting about the state, if they get encoding for it, they want to code it as pre-engineering. So as I was telling them, as a pre-engineering, you have the option of going into a company and being trained for it, or going to college, taking the class doesn't pigeonhole you. And so they want to, pre-engineering with manufacturing added. They looked at the curriculum, and so we're pretty excited about that. Mr. Rodinsky had the assembly, and I think we have about nine students signed up now, Mr. Rodinsky.
Yeah.
So we keep recruiting, and hopefully grow the program. I'd like to thank the school board, the village council, Mr. Keeler, the port authority, the county commissioners for the support of the grant, your letters of support really helped us be a part, we'll get the grant. I don't know how many applicants there were, but we were one of the, that did receive around 16 of the LGIF grant. Speaking of the village, Mr. Keeler and I will be having lunch tomorrow. Gary Phillips came up with police, the new police chief, Chief Lovejoy. And we're going to have a lunch tomorrow with some village council officials and the school, and try to maintain a positive relationship, updates, and get the, start off on a good foot as we go with the new police chief and new mayor. So we're excited about that. Also, as you see, number nine, reorganization. I recommend tonight's agenda, the realignment administration. Mr. Rodinsky's going to do the 712 principal. Mr. Ridgeway's going to do special ed coordinator, and then do a K6 principal. And we're gonna conduct interviews and post that as soon as possible after tonight's meeting. You know, we're under way to after the meeting till we discuss, I brought that up. Mr. Ridgeway is going to be the special ed, welcome in, Mr. Ridgway. He's going to be the special ed coordinator for a set number of days, 120, and then we're gonna transition into the K6 principal, learning that as well, to have a similar position we have when Mr. Ridgeway came as K4 principal and special ed coordinator.
Rob, on that reorganization?
Yes.
How much like administrative time goes into changing that around? Like, what are some of the things you have to do? Like, do you have to send anything to the state, does students have a different principal? What do you do about the logistics?
Right. A lot goes in, and lives are being discussed. What we're gonna do is, as far as the state, we just have to put that on the safe account. And then it goes to everything else. And then as far as the, when I first got here, it was K6, 712. And one of the, one of the issues was 5 and 6 are a different time schedule. So they're without a principal, or actually, Mr. Rodinsky worked hand in hand to help with that, with that. Usually, you know, the person gets here, it only ends up being a half hour. But there's some logistics there. We looked at putting 5, 6 with K4 in this hall. Problem is the busing. And as you know, more K6 ride the bus than 712 because they have their cars or they have athletics afterwards. We looked at it, and we'd have to put another bus on the road right now. And that, every bus on the road is about $60,000, $65,000. So we are working those things out, and there are issues. Fortunately, we've had this configuration before, and Troy's been part of it, and that's helped us as we've discussed it. So.
Classroom stay the same?
Classroom stay the same, yeah.
They're in the same hall?
Same hallway. They're self-contained now, which is better. When we did it before, we actually were switching classes with 5th and 6 as well. Now 5th and 6 self-contained, so hopefully makes that easier. But yeah. Thank you. For new business, I'm gonna do 1 through 3 together. Recommend the two-year contracts for Chris Roth, Melanie Steltz, and Megan Torrance. The employment under a one-year limited contract for Ray and Barufa, Lisa Buzozzi, Sandra Mitchell, Leanne Jaeger. And employment under a one-year contract for math, STEM engineering, and manufacturing for the 201617 school year for Michelle Long.
Motion. Second. Discussion?
I'm sorry, I always hog it, but I will say, try to clarify some things. Michelle was a half-time math teacher. Our intention is not to replace that half-time math. It's now a full-time position with the STEM engineering manufacturing. Joe Jeswald in the meeting yesterday. Joe was the coach of the state champion Gerard Robotics team. And he's hoping that this program explodes into where, because we're talking about the schedule, that we have more than one section of this in the future. And I said, "That would be great," you know, we'll see how it goes. And we're also looking at maybe starting some other programs from this, so. That's all I had on the first three.
Any further discussion? Jennifer, roll.
Mr. Duco?
Yes.
Mr. Hendricks?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Votak?
Yes.
Mr. Rowley?
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna do 4 and 5 together. The employment of one-year contract per unit agreement for Jennifer Sharp and Lori Marston. And regular following under a continuing contract, starting in 201617, Terry May Jr. and Shannon Morrow.
Motion. Second. Discussion?
I will say that Terry Jr., as you know, is a custodian. And Shannon Morrow works in the kitchen. Got great recommendations from both their supervisors for recommending the continuing contract.
With Terry then, is, are we all straight on the outside and inside, or does that not matter?
Yeah.
Doesn't really matter?
Yeah, it doesn't really matter.
Okay.
He took over for a .5 custodian.
Okay.
So, and then eliminate that outside position. Russ has the right to assign them where he wants to be.
Will he be living full-time later?
Full-time.
Okay. All right.
Because we have a retirement coming up.
Mr. Hendricks?
Yes.
Mr. Duco?
Yes.
Mr. Votak?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Rowley?
Yes.
6, doing by itself, approved Mary Rice guidance counselor, 10 days extended time at the end of the 1516 school year, and then at the beginning of the 1617 school year.
Motion. Second. Discussion?
No, motion's me.
Oh, I thought you. No, I first, you're second. Okay, discussion, please.
We didn't. I was just gonna, no, I was just gonna say, hopefully this is the last time because we put in the contract we negotiated for next year.
Anything else, guys? Jennifer?
Mr. Rowley?
Yes.
Mr. Votak?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Hendricks?
Yes.
Mr. Duco?
7 is employment of one-year limited contract for 1617 for 3 MH teachers, Chris McKay, Lori Knowles, and Laura Saldano, Saldanio, I've always forgotten her name. Thank you. And the, as well as the assistants, Karen McKim, Valerie, and Sue Weaver. Thank you.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Discussion?
Kevin, you work with the family, so.
Jennifer?
Mr. Hendricks?
Yes.
Mr. Duco?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Votak?
Yes.
Mr. Rowley?
Yes.
8, 9, together, resignation, retirement. Mike Bailey as the boys' soccer coach effective May 12th, and Bill Knight effective July 1st as a custodian.
Motion. Second. Discussion? Jennifer?
Mr. Hendricks?
Yes.
Mr. Rowley?
Yes.
Mr. Votak?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Duco?
Yes.
10 by itself, the supplemental contracts for the 1617 school year. Hugo Mendel, girls' soccer. Lola, varsity cheerleading. Hannah Buzowski, assistant volleyball coach, and Rose as the cheerleading volunteer.
Do I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Discussion?
Just want to say, we went through this today, and we went back, and we're working on a better checklist to make sure that we have everything. Lisa and I, and Troy, we'd, yesterday, and we did find one. So as of now, they all have their fingerprints correctly, so we did get that today from Lola. Okay. And the, we have most of the, but before the start of the season, we're gonna have all of those. And we're gonna do a recheck before the season to make sure before camp starts that we recheck them again. So.
Further discussion? Jennifer?
Mr. Duco?
Yes.
Mr. Votak?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Hendricks?
Yes.
Mr. Rowley?
Yes.
11 and 12, first is salary advancement for Josie Ardene and Hallie Fast. And 12 is Brandon Fringer as home instruction tutor for the remainder of the 1516 school year.
Motion. Second. Discussion?
What's, what's number 12? What's the already rate for that?
20 dollars an hour.
Yeah, we had, there was a move in at the end of the, and it was an issue. And before we get in place.
Further discussion? Jennifer?
Mr. Hendricks?
Yes.
Mr. Votak?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Duco?
Yes.
Mr. Rowley? Sorry, I'm losing my spot here.
13 through 15, I'm gonna put together, so I'll talk about each one. Employment under a two-year contract for Troy Rodinsky, 712 principal. The two-year contract for Ed Ridgeway for special ed coordinator. And a two-year contract for Lisa Lorch for youth coordinator and administrative secretary.
I'll place the motion.
I'll second it.
And we'll move into discussion.
The, once again, that's the breakdown that we had talked about, and then we would interview as early, advertise early as tomorrow for the elementary principal. And that's all.
Further discussion? Jennifer?
Mr. Rowley?
Yes.
Mr. Votak?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Hendricks?
Yes.
Mr. Duco?
Yes.
B is the supplemental contracts that fall in for the 1617 school year. I was just gonna say, it was very nice, we filled them all last year, I believe we went into June, correct, Mr. Rodinsky? So I'm just gonna put them, 1A through AA. On number B, on letter B, 1A through AA.
I was looking forward to it. Discussion?
Second.
Second.
Second, I took second to Michael, okay. Now we're going to discussion. List is quite lengthy. No discussion, guys? Jennifer?
Mr. Hendricks?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Votak?
Present.
I can't move on discussion.
Abstain.
Oh, abstain.
Abstain.
Mr. Duco?
Abstain.
Mr. Rowley?
Yes.
1 through 5 are our substitutes together. Pauline Bellows as a substitute teacher. Mindy Smalley for a bus driver for the, I'm sorry, let me go back. Pauline is for the 1617 school year, Mindy is for the 1516 school year, and for the 1617 school year, thank you. Substitute teachers as attached. Substitute bus drivers, Ray Clark, Rama, Wittenberger, Christina Smith, Melanie Glosser, Crystal Baker, Tab Bailey, Melissa Falk. Substitute custodians, Jordan Taylor, Andrea Percy, Jerre War, Melanie Glosser, Connie Harrison, Shannon Morrow.
You got the plot 6.
Yeah, I got 6.
Oh, 1 through 5.
1 through 5.
1 through 5, I'm sorry.
Yeah. How can we vote on 6, Rob?
I have that as 3 second.
One at a time.
I have 3 second motions for that.
Okay.
That was 1 through 5.
1 through 5.
I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Will we go into discussion?
I just want to say that thank you for giving us another substitute bus driver, Mrs. Lorch. Mindy's gonna do both here, that's good.
Good Leitonia trial. Go Bears.
We're allowed to, am I allowed to approve substitute teacher? Because my wife's on the list. So it's Michael's.
Not for teaching.
But it's under 3.
Those are teachers, substitute teachers.
Is it on the list though that's attached?
Yeah. Oh, Dan, Michael, and I see they're on the list.
Usually we keep them all on the same list, that's why.
Oh, that's why, I did not know that, I didn't know it was on the same list.
So that doesn't make it enough too?
Yeah.
Wait, unless you go, can't you vote 6A? Vote 6B, 6C, but individual?
No, I was just gonna go, motion for 1, 2, 4, and 5. Move it over, motion 1, 2, 4, and 5.
Okay.
That's Richard.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We just did discussion, do we need more discussion?
That's 1, 2, 4, and 5.
On 2, 4, and 5 this time.
So our substitute pay must be okay? I don't mean that, because we're getting, we're.
We're getting a lot, yes, we are.
We adjusted it last year, so that's good.
Yeah, it is.
I'm gonna look at our pay this summer for all positions. I'm gonna do a survey and see if we're, how we're doing.
Jennifer?
Okay, 1, 2, 4, and 5.
We already had motion, and it's okay.
Mr. Hendricks? Mr. Votak?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Actually, no, no, I'm, Mr. Duco?
Yes.
Mr. Rowley?
Yes.
Now what are you doing for 3?
I'm gonna do this.
I'm gonna put 3 on the next agenda. I'm gonna put that, and that way I can have the listed names, I pull them out of A through B.
That's fine.
Okay. Now 6, we have that long list that we did together, 6 we have to do separately for approval of following secretary A substitutes for the 1617 school year. 6A, Marcy Hendricks.
Motion.
Second. Discussion? Jennifer?
Mr. Duco?
Yes.
Mr. Votak?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Hendricks?
Abstain.
Mr. Rowley?
Yes.
6B, Kelly Rowley.
Motion.
Second. Discussion? Jennifer?
Mr. Duco?
Yes.
Mr. Hendricks?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Votak?
Yes.
Mr. Rowley?
Abstain.
Okay, and 6C, Michelle Votak.
Motion.
Second.
Which one?
I'll hold second.
Rowley?
I got you, Michelle.
I think we're okay with, sorry, I'm out of order. But I think you're okay on 3. I think as long as Dan didn't vote on 3, he abstained, you should be fine because Kelly and Marcy are considered aides when they're in the library.
Yeah, but they're all on the same, it says as the attachment.
They're on the attachment, so I'm gonna stick them off and do with.
Yeah, that's on the list that I'm saying. And that would be filed with the government.
I got you.
Motion.
Do you have a motion?
You did.
Yes. Rowley? Mr. Duco?
Yes.
This on first!
Mr. Rowley?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson? Mr. Votak? Mr. Hendricks? Oh my God, this night's not going too well.
Okay. Number 7, Fulman Cafeteria substitutes for the 1617 school year. Rebecca Brown, Melanie Glosser, and Vicki Haliski.
Motion.
Second. Discussion? Jennifer?
Mr. Hendricks?
Yes.
Mr. Duco?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Votak?
Yes.
Mr. Rowley?
Yes.
Okay, students D1 and 2, resolution authorizing continued membership in the Ohio High School Athletic Association for the 1617 school year. And approved coach Hade begin making arrangements for the football team to travel for an overnight stay and Saturday game versus Fairport Harbor on August 26, 2016.
Motion.
Second. Discussion?
Is it Harding or Harbor?
Harbor. Or no, it's Harding High.
It's Fairport Harbor.
Harding High.
High School, yeah, Harding High.
As long as it's not the other Harding High.
Harding was on the.
Yeah.
Okay.
And what do we, what do, same rules apply to this as any other trip we take, provisions looks?
and chaperones and.
Same thing.
Okay.
Yeah, just like going to DC or any overnight trip we've done before, they're our trip.
Jennifer?
Mr. Duco?
Yes.
Mr. Hendricks?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Votah?
Yes.
Mr. Rowley?
The use of facilities, Mrs. Steltz to do CPR in the library on June 1st, class of 2018 to 11 meeting on May 23rd, high school cheerleaders order car wash on our campus on June 4th, girls' high school basketball camp 13th through the 16th of June, boys' camp also on June 27th through 29th, high school cheer camp June 27th to 29th, high school boys' basketball team to order scrimmage on June 9th, and the men's 50-plus baseball team to use the high school field on June 12th.
I'll place the motion.
Second.
Discussion? Jennifer?
Mr. Rowley?
Yes.
Mr. Duco?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Votah?
Yes.
Mr. Hendricks?
Yes.
Theft Business and Operations, the renewal of the participating O'Meara Risa Cooperative Service for the 16-17 school year, participation in the co-op purchasing of classroom, office, maintenance, and health supplies, approved increase in cafeteria prices for the 16-17 school year as attached, first reading of the attached board policies, the contract for services with educational service center, 16-17, the gifted teacher, as well as supervision, speech pathologist, and school psychologist.
Do I have a motion, a second?
Motion was.
I might have made the motion.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Henderson, we move into discussion.
The board policies, it wasn't, we didn't have board policies up, but we looked at the reimbursement policy and Jen actually went through all of the financial policies in there to update. There weren't a lot of changes, but there were a few things that she wanted to tweak.
Mostly it was the two that I changed. It had the superintendent doing the thing and I already did it, so I just changed the treasurer instead of superintendent.
Yeah, and I was happy. And then the reimbursement was the other one.
Is the reimbursement the one that I had asked about before?
Yes, that's what I asked about last month.
On the reimbursement one, I'm sorry, I didn't notice that was in here. Does that, do you have, how does it work, travel from home to an event? Is it always from the school to the event?
To, like a meeting or anything? Or you, are you actually talking about athletic events?
Let's talk about athletic events.
Okay.
Do you cut, do you back off your home to.